I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:30 on September 16th, 2014. And my name is Joe Ivers. I will serve as board chair for the evening as Wendell Jones will not be able to attend. Would you please stand for their pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next data, our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. And I call Dr. John Staton to assist in honors, awards, and recognitions.
Good evening. At this time, we will begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. At this time, I ask Ms. Jennifer Weaver, our Director of Secondary Education, to come forward to introduce the seniors of the month.
Tonight, we have three seniors of the month, all gentlemen representing this evening. Auburn High School will be coming next month. They had a prior obligation, so I'd like to begin this evening with Blacksburg High School. Mr. Brian Kits is here.
Tradition at Blacksburg High School extends me the privilege of selecting our first senior of the month. We're proud to announce Mr. Sean Bissel, who's accompanied tonight by Dad Charles and Mom Noel. Would you all please come forward and be recognized? Sean exemplifies what every school wants in a comprehensive student. He excels in the classroom, runs a rigorous schedule, and is always looking for new and exciting academic challenges. He never complains and always puts his best foot forward. As the president of the student body and a national officer in DECA, Sean demonstrates exceptional leadership and commitment. Teachers will often reflect on Sean's ability to articulate and grasp the bigger picture, even in difficult times. There is no better senior of the month to kick off the 2014-15 school year than Mr. Sean Bissel. Congratulations.
It is with great pride that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's September Senior of the Month, Simeon Alexander Brown. He is accompanied this evening by his mother, Kimberly Smith, his father Kendall Brown, his little brothers Kobe and Elijah. Would you please come forward at this time to be recognized? Simeon is recognized as our first senior of the month for the class of 2015 for the large number of contributions he has made to the CHS community. He meets high academic standards, is a talented three-sport athlete, a gifted thespian, a budding politician, and a singing voice that's so smooth and strong that it has garnered a number of comparisons with several Motown legends. Sometimes in high schools, we get to see the early signs of greatness in students through snippets or flashes of accomplishment. Simeon Brown is that rare student who has pulled it all together and really came into his own long before his senior year even started. Those who know him have no doubt that a great future lies ahead, and we are very proud to have him represent Christiansburg High School as our first senior of the month.
Ms. Blackburn, Dr. Staton. It is great, with great pride, that I introduce to you our Eastern Montgomery High School's September Senior of the Month. At this time, Collins Mitchell Smith and his mother Kim, who's here with him, would you please come forward to be recognized? I will quote Vicki Kits, our Shawsville Middle School and Eastern Montgomery High School gifted resource teacher, who's here with us this evening. She had this to say. "Collins Smith is a true scholar who seeks knowledge with enthusiasm, energy, and dedication to learning. He is not content with a brief exploration of content, instead searching for a deeper, more meaningful study of any and all topics he encounters. Collins understands adversity but refuses to let obstacles deter him from reaching his goals. He sets the example of one who chooses to persevere in spite of challenges that could have defeated most. Collins' determination wills him to continue forward on his quest for knowledge. As a learner who insists on depth and complexity, Collins is that rare student who is challenged by the teachers he respects and admires for their gifts to him in their classrooms. Congratulations, Collins. May your path be strewn with kindness, energy, inquiry, and joy as you journey towards success."
At this time, the board will take a break and which will allow Ms. Blackburn and the board of, the members of the board to congratulate tonight's recipients.
Of the school board, we set aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes have passed. Our first speaker will be Eric Kaufman.
Hello, my name is Eric Kaufman. This is my family. We live at 700 Washington Street in Blacksburg. We previously lived in Christiansburg since 2007 and have generally been pleased with Montgomery County Schools and wish that there wasn't a need to be here this evening. We generally have support at lots of different levels, but with the move to Blacksburg, we have not felt the support in getting a bus stop at an appropriate location. And so I'll share a few different handouts to help guide you with that information. Ethan, can you take this up there?
So our move is unique. It was a move onto campus, and so I knew at the time of the move, there was not a bus stop at, within what the school district had identified as appropriate distance for school-aged children. But we went ahead and put the information on our kindergarten registration and the transfer paperwork with our address and documentation of our residence and indicated that we planned to use the bus system. When, at the time, I didn't really follow up knowing that the school year was still finishing out and thought we'd wait until there was time to kind of assess the situation. As we got to the start of the school year and were approaching that, realizing that there still wasn't a published bu- bus stop, then was advised to call the Transportation Department and was told that Montgomery County Schools would not put a bus stop on Virginia Tech's campus. I didn't really inquire as to why at that point in time, but asked what the options were, and so the published, or what they indicated as a bus stop, you can see on the map at Clay and Harrell Street, which is beyond the guideline for elementary age students. Looking at that and assessing the situation, didn't, wanted to follow up further, first talked to the principal at Margaret Beeks Elementary. He indicated that the Transportation Department had authority of that, but also referred me to our Assistant Superintendent of Operations. And you can look at the timeline as far as a progression of different steps, and I have copies of the emails as far as where that's been kind of pushed down multiple times saying that that's where the stop is. And yesterday, an email indicating that the matter was closed. And our interest is not trying to get special treatment. We have a lot of benefits from being on campus and other things, but because of Siobhan's mobility concerns, she's not able to drive and in a wheelchair, and having to go, you know, beyond that distance to meet a bus stop really doesn't make it feasible for her to take the kids to the bus stop, meet them at the bus stop, and we're trying to manage in different ways getting our kids to and from school or the bus stop. Today, after there was an email saying the matter was closed...
Mr. Kaufman, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
May I pass some additional documentation and paperwork?
That's all the, that's all the people who have signed up. Is there anyone, anyone else who wishes to address the board at this time? Please state your name and address.
My name is Marjorie Marcy. I live at 1645 St. Andrews Circle in Blacksburg. I have lived there for 25 years. I am the proud parent of two Montgomery County Public School graduates. One of them is doing very well in Cincinnati. The other one is Phi Beta Kappa and a minister in Roanoke. I believe in Montgomery County Schools. I also believe in my friends Eric and Siobhan Kaufman. They are not asking for special privilege. Obviously, Siobhan has mobility issues, but I can tell you from knowing them the past seven years, they face things and are willing to try. They have tried to work this thing out. What is more precious than these children? Nothing. And I hope that the board will consider some way that we can have them picked up and brought back home with ease and with safety. Thank you.
Could you give me your last name again, please?
Absolutely. It's Marcy, M-A-R-C-Y. I sound like I've got two first names.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this time? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Give a note here, the next issue is consent items. Is there anyone who wishes to pull a consent item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do you have a motion to adopt the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any, any question about the personnel report?
Yeah, there seems to be a...
Could you pull your mic towards you, please?
Sorry. There seem to be several special ed positions in the last several weeks, and I know that's a, you know, difficult position to fill throughout the years, but have we had a big turnover? What's going on?
We were able to start the school year with all of our positions filled. We had one speech and language position that was not filled at the opening of the school year. Since that time, I believe we had a resignation and then another person who requested to transfer to another school district. And those, the resignation, of course, we had to honor. The transfer request was based upon our ability to find an appropriately certified replacement. And so, to my knowledge, we are currently fully staffed. Is that correct, Mr. McElandro? So, yes, there has been some turnover, but we have continued to find appropriate candidates.
Okay. All those, any more questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel reporters.
Pass.
Payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are paid. Financial summary report. Do you have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions about the financial summary report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Superintendents' reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Our next item is an update on our Continuous Improvement Professional Development Plan: Increasing Student Engagement. As you know, Montgomery County Public Schools focused on engagement last year. The focus involved improving the use of instructional strategies that support connections between teachers and students around content areas. Tonight, Ms. Weaver and Dr. Schultz will share some of our results. For 2014-2015, our focus on engaging students at every level will continue.
Good evening again. Jonathan and I stood before you at almost exactly the same time last year with a pretty comprehensive plan that I think we were both a little unsure if we'd be able to implement in all its glory, but we're really pleased tonight to give you an update. So what I did was copy the slides that we showed you last year, and then we've got an update for how those actually played out. So as always, we begin with a model for effective instruction. This guides all of our work in curriculum and instruction, and we talked to you specifically last year about focusing on engagement, on relationships, and on instructional strategies. And these were our goals for last year. We were going to focus on engaging students, maximizing instructional time, making sure we were teaching bell-to-bell, using research-based effective strategies that would get us the biggest bang for our buck. And then as a division, we were going to try to make progress on giving teachers systematic feedback so that they could improve their practice. So for the first goal, all teachers at all four high schools engaged in a book study and an opening introductory session. We had four school-based meetings and four joint department meetings, and then we had an end-of-the-year planning session. And then in terms of feedback, we completed six data sweeps. All teachers had four 20-minute observations, and the math teachers received lesson-pan feedback from Jonathan. One of the other things we were excited about expanding on last year was the idea of we, we knew that it was going to take all team members to accomplish our goals, so we talked to you about roles teachers would play, coaches, supervisors, assistant principals, principals, central office administrators, and I'm pleased that that really is exactly how things played out. Every single person listed on this group participated in a book study and all the PDD sessions, all the joint meetings, all the school-based meetings, all the data sweeps, and all the observations. So it really did take a team to accomplish our goals. And then I told you that there were going to be some ways that we would monitor throughout the year. We were going to ask students about their levels of engagement. We were going to ask teachers about how things were going and what we needed to focus on. We were going to look at classrooms, and we were going to monitor student achievement. So tonight, Jonathan will give you an update on all of those things. To start with, obviously, the center point of improving instruction happens with the teacher. So we collected feedback from teachers throughout the year to guide our practices as we went and also to shape our plans for this year. And so some of the common themes that we heard from teachers are that they felt like we focused a lot on engagement strategies, but they felt like sometimes they were out of context. Were we doing engagement for entertainment purpose or just to say that we were doing engaging things? Or did it really fit in to the context of their lesson? There was certainly some controversy about the data sweep rubric and what particularly was on it and how it looked, and so they wanted to make sure that that reflected the classroom experience. And so we revised the data sweep rubric, which we'll see in a few minutes. And then teachers wanted feedback about their whole lesson. Obviously, when you're only in there for 20 minutes, you just see a piece of it, and they felt like sometimes, oh, you just missed this part, or you missed the piece that connected it to what we were doing. And so that, those were the feedback, the feedback that we received from them, and I'll share with you at the end how we're incorporating that into our plans for this year.
So one of the main things we did last year was simply go out and look at kids in classrooms, and we did it a lot. Between, you know, some large teams of assistant principals, principals, curriculum supervisors, going out to every, every school, every classroom, you know, four different times throughout the year, we ended up doing, you know, almost 1,800, you know, short, less than three-minute observations in classrooms where we just walk in, look at what's going on in the classroom, what are the kids doing, what's the level of engagement? Are they sitting passively? Are they receiving content? Are they engaged? Are they working? Are they doing? Are they talking? Whoever's, you know, whoever's mouth is moving is whoever's brain is growing, you know, in that sense. So we want to try to push, you know, try to help, help folks turn things over to the kids, make the kids, essentially what we want from an engagement standpoint is more kids doing more work and being more successful. So when we look at our data sweep observations across the year, what the slide shows is essentially if we saw green, if we coded it as green, it was, you know, a high-level, a high-level instructional strategy going on in the classroom, whether it was students working together, it was teachers using very engaging questioning strategies, whether students were solving problems, they were working together on projects. That's what kind of shifted it into the green. Yellow would be more of an information reception model where you're, you know, and that, that has to happen, has to be part of our instruction. We do have to share things and present things to students. And red would have been coded as off-task for some reason. So either the students or the teachers, something was, something was not focused on instruction, were we not teaching bell-to-bell, were we not filled in? As you watch the data change across the year, you can see the green go up clearly, the red drop very low, and the yellow kind of come down to a more balanced approach. So if you compare what we saw in April with what we saw in September, you can see a big difference there.
Do you have specific measurements when you walk into a classroom so that you can decide what would...
And that's what, that's what Jennifer was just referring to in terms of the idea of the rubric. We needed a starting point at the beginning of the year or what, in order to say, what is what we're going to say is green? What are the things we're looking for? What is yellow? Where, what do those things fit? So we spent a lot of the PDD time over the course of the year last year sharing videos with teachers and helping everybody get to a common understanding of the rubric and what we were looking for. In fact, one of the common remarks that I heard from some of the math teachers as we worked together last year was by January, they felt pretty comfortable saying, "We understand what we're looking for. We understand what it is we're trying to do," and started to move in that direction. And so it was kind of building that understanding, and then as Jennifer indicated, the teachers had an opportunity to provide feedback and revise that rubric for this year. In terms of asking the students and talking to them about the, using, you know, their perceptions on engagement, we used a very broad and detailed student survey, which, one of the things that we found in that survey was, in the fall, we had a lot of students throughout the high schools who were showing, you know, a lack of a focus on learning, not being interested in, in learning in their participation. By the time we administered that survey in the spring, essentially that, that sort of, that group of students who were reporting that they were not focused on learning, they, you know, based on their, their survey responses that they were, you know, basically disengaged, that group dropped almost to the point where it was gone and sort of shifted back into the middle. So we really got to, you know, and again, it was an anonymous survey, so we don't know which students they were, but the bottom end of, of the results in terms of a lack of a focus on learning tended, seemed to disappear from the fall administration to the spring administration.
Is there a formula that you're looking for as far as engagement? What's the yellow again?
The yellow would be more of a passive. One way to think of it would be active versus passive.
So is there a formula that you're looking for?
Well, we, we, working with the teachers, we tried to, we tried to get it to be a balance. We basically said it should be about an even split between green and yellow, that there's teacher doing, students doing, as a balance of what we're looking for, and we want to minimize the red. So that was our goal as a, as a rough target.
So 50/50, zero.
Well, probably more like...
Is ideal.
Maybe, you know, 47 and a half, 47 and a half, five. Or something like that.
About zero.
Okay. Well, because sometimes things, well, any teacher will tell you it's not always in their control. The bell, announcements happen, the bell rings, the computer gets stuck, all kinds of, there's always stuff that's out of their control. And then we, so we want to, we want to control what we can control.
Process.
So in terms of the results, one of the pieces that I'm really happy to share, what you see on this slide is the history of, and you've seen this slide for the last two years since we had the reset on the math tests. And essentially, the green line is Montgomery County, the black line is the state pass rate since the inception of SOLs back in 1998 and initiation of SOL testing. Essentially, what you can see is that over the course of SOL testing, and certainly at the high school level, Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II, Montgomery County had never really met or exceeded the state average. And as of this year, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II have all caught and passed the state. Those are some really big changes. As of 2012, when we did the first run-through in the testing, out of 132 school divisions, and this is a new way for us to look at the data that just came out in the last week or so from the state, but so out of, you know, out of 132 school divisions, we were 91st in Algebra II last year, and we are 22 in Algebra II this year. And Geometry and Algebra, Geometry and Algebra I have made similar big jumps. So the bottom line is, I think we had the results to, to indicate that we saw big changes in the classroom. In terms of why that happened, the answer is really simple. The teachers did it. You know, we have great kids and we have great teachers. The teachers did it, but the teachers taught differently than they've taught in the past. When we went out and did the, as Jennifer mentioned, the 20-minute observations, they were focused really heavily on feedback to teachers. So being in a classroom with a principal and a curriculum supervisor focused on their content and giving them feedback on what the, what the level of engagement was in the classroom, what were the strategies they were using, and how was it working? And creating a feedback loop with teachers on, here's what we'd like to see, here's what we're trying to learn, to, to have everybody be comfortable with in terms of instructional strategies, and then we want you to go out and try them in your classroom, and then we're coming to give feedback. So they, they really weren't about got you, you know, gotcha, or you're not doing the right thing, but it was about trying to help people learn and grow and change those pieces. So as you look at the 20-minute observations, again, across the high school teachers, we did 628 of those across all high school teachers. You can see very clearly that as the, as the year progressed, the teachers increased in comfort with the higher, the higher engagement, higher engaging strategies. Math, you see the results are very similar. We did 126, 126 of those, of those 20-minute observations were in math, and that, you know, the bottom line was that the teachers were able to come up with structures and strategies in their classroom that had kids doing more work, they had fewer opportunities for a kid to hide and opt out and sit quietly and be behaved, but not necessarily participate and kind of stay back. And so by creating those, those situations, I think we got to an understanding where it was no longer, it wasn't engagement as a, as a dog and pony show or something fun and cutesy activities, it was fewer kids hiding. and cutesy activities, it was fewer kids hiding and more kids having to do more math and to be more successful at it. And I think we had results to indicate that.
So, we were really pleased with our results, but we know that we still have progress to make. And so, this year, we took the feedback from the teachers, from our academic review process with the state and tweaked what we were going to focus on. And so, our two goals for this year going forward are continue to focus on engagement, but to do it in context. Teachers are really clear that they wanted us to look at the whole lesson and understand what role that strategy was playing for their purpose for that day in that lesson. And so, we'll be looking at the whole process instead of only engagement. And then, we want to make sure that teachers are choosing the right strategy at the right time. And so, we'll continue with a very similar format to what we used last year because it was very successful. So, we're continuing with the joint and school-based meetings. And I will say on behalf of the high school teachers that they are extremely appreciative to have some additional early release time because last year, they spent a tremendous amount of time staying late and participating in those meetings. And so, we were able to move a few of these meetings to those early release times. So, they, on, on their behalf, I'll just say thank you, they really appreciated that. We'll continue with the data sweeps with a revised rubric that we worked with teachers on. 20-minute observations will continue, so every teacher will continue to get observations with their, a pair of their curriculum supervisor and principal. And this year, we're adding on lesson plan reflections and feedback because again, they wanted us to consider the whole context of the lesson instead of just a piece. And so, we really want to give them feedback, not just on the engagement strategy, but on how does it fit in their goal for that day and is it really helping them? It's just like we talk about technology all the time. You don't do technology for technology's sake, you do it because it helps you meet a particular need. And so, we want to do the same thing with engagement, make sure that the strategies we're teaching, they understand how to use it and when to use it and for what purpose. And so, we're very excited for year two. And like I said, we're, we're really pleased that of the plan last year, we didn't delete any slides, this is exactly what we told you we were going to be doing, and we were really able to accomplish it. And I think it all goes back to that we slide. It really was a tremendous amount of people working together on something. I think that this is, you heard the role of the coaches a few weeks ago, the teachers, the supervisors, everyone really did work together to try and attack this, and we're really proud of our results.
Just a quick question, 20-minute observations, it sounded like some of the feedback that you got from the teachers was you weren't able to see everything or look at everything. Is there any thought to maybe making some of those observations longer than 20 minutes so you can see the entire lesson?
What we're actually going to focus on this year is pairing that 20-minute observation with a lesson plan review. And so, we'll be able to look at their plans for the whole lesson and see how the 20 minutes that we saw fit in is how we're going to attack that.
Okay.
What is a data sweep?
Data sweep is basically a team comes in, we go room-to-room, cover the whole building, and we're cataloging, rating, whatever we see when we first walk in. So, as soon as we walk in, we stay only long enough to tell what's going on. And as soon as we know, that gets coded as a red, yellow or green activity. And so, we collected, like you could see, was it about 1,800?
It's a walkthrough.
Activities. Yeah, it's just a short walkthrough.
Not, not tied to, you know, tied to the school level, uh, school level data. You know, we don't walk in and say it's Mrs. Smith or, or Mr. Jones, we just walk in and just go through the building. So, it's not a-
Yeah, not recorded by teacher at all. It had nothing to do with the evaluation process or individual teachers. We were getting a read on the whole school as an average, what did we see most people doing?
That was my next question. So, this is divorced from what the principals do in their evaluation process, this is completely separate?
Absolutely. And principals actually didn't observe in their own buildings. They did data sweeps in other buildings, which was a good opportunity, I think, as well for administrators to see other teachers in practice. So, I think that was a positive.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks Jennifer and Jonathan for your tenacity and leadership in this task. And it certainly has paid off with some significant gains in student achievement. And hearing teachers talk about instruction, you always know that you've been successful when teachers are talking about what they do to make a difference with students. So, thank you again. Our next item is the State Accreditation and Federal Accountability Summary Report. And you have a hard copy of that report on the dais because we didn't post it until today because today was actually the day that the VDOE released both the state and the federal accountability results for Virginia schools. I shared some data and potential outcomes for Montgomery County Public Schools with you in July. And tonight, Carol Jennings is going to provide you with a look at the division's results. Carol.
And as Ms. Blackburn said tonight, I am going to give you an update on the state accreditation and federal accountability, that both of which were just released today, as she said. And as she said, you also received this information in July.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
We have this printout, which is more current or are they the same?
They're the same.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first, we're going to talk about state accreditation. And for the last three years, the number of school, schools statewide that are not fully accredited has steadily increased. Three years ago, the, there were approximately 5 and 1/2% of the schools statewide that did not have full accreditation. Last year, that rose to 22% of the schools. And this year, it rose to 32% of the schools statewide that are not fully accredited. So, if you put that into numbers, out of 1,827 schools in the state, last year, 393 schools were not fully accredited. This year, that number increased to 581 schools that do not have full accreditation status. And if you look at that in terms of school divisions, there are 132 school divisions in the state. And of those 132 school divisions, 110 school divisions have at least one school that does, is, that is not fully accredited. So, you do the math, that's only 22 school divisions that have all fully accredited schools. And this is just a reminder of what the benchmarks are for state accreditation. And this year, all Montgomery County schools will be accredited. Fifteen schools will be fully accredited and four schools will be accredited with warning. And you might ask, both referring back to my previous comments on the other slide and also about the four schools that are not accredited in Montgomery County, why? And that's because we have increased rigor on the SOL assessments and we are now in the third and fourth year for reading and math and science with the increased rigor. And this means that many schools in Montgomery County and across the state cannot rely on a three-year rolling average. Okay?
So, in other words, you have to make that benchmark score in the, in the testing year.
On a single-year scores.
So, a question, we have one school, so it's been three years that that school has not been accredited?
Yes, that's Christiansburg High School. And I'm going to talk about them in just a minute. Even though they are not accredited this year, our other two high schools that were not accredited last year, Auburn High School and Easter Montgomery are accredited. But as I'll be saying in just a few minutes, Christiansburg High School made a 15-point gain in their math scores. And their math accreditation number was, they had a pass rate of 69.47%. So, had that moved to 69.50%, they would be fully accredited. And so, we were, they, even though they are not, they've made huge, huge gains.
You indicated that there were 22 schools that were fully accredited?
22 school divisions in the state-
Right.
-that have all fully accredited schools.
Which means they don't have warnings?
No warnings, accreditation denied, not conditional accreditation, provisionally accredited.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay? And as you see, Montgomery County does now have three high schools that are fully accredited. And it's important to note that both Bellevue Elementary and Christiansburg High School are less than one percentage point away from being, or from having full accreditation status. Christiansburg High School is less than 1% away on single-year scores. And Bellevue is less than one percentage point away on the three-year rolling average. So, many factors contributed to the success of the high schools, but some of those factors are the division's focus and investment in mathematics has had a definitive impact at the high schools. The division provided funding for additional math resources and increased the number of math coaches. Also, last year, the primary focus at the high school level was engagement, the amount of time students are actively engaged in learning instructional content. Administration and staff participated in ongoing professional development, modeling, data sweeps and classroom observations with feedback. We were able to show an increase, just as Jonathan and Jennifer just presented, an increase in student engagement in the classroom as the year progressed. And we believe the higher test scores are a testament to that growth. The central office team, along with principal and teacher input, has already put a plan, started working on a plan for our schools that are accredited with warning this year. Okay, and now, we're going to switch to federal accountability. And this slide is to remind you that we still have nine subgroups for federal accountability. And you must meet every subgroup that, a, a school must meet every subgroup that it has at least 30 students in that subgroup in order to meet federal accountability. No school in Montgomery County has all nine subgroups, but the school division does. And this slide is just a visual to show you the math benchmarks, that each subgroup started out in a different place, but by 2016, 2017, all the subgroups will have the same benchmark. And that's just a couple of years away, which seems hard to believe, except for the Asian subgroup, and they started out at a different level than all the other subgroups, so their benchmark is a little higher. And then, you see the same thing for English. Again, all subgroups started out with a different benchmark, but again, by 2016, 17, they all will have a different, they all will have the same benchmark. And again, with the Asian subgroup, just slightly higher.
We, we are, we are missing one indicator for a subgroup on here. There are three green lines, two of them you can't tell apart.
Okay.
And-
Um.
And we only have two green lines.
I'll have to look at that a little more closely at this subgroup. It could be that they are so closely overlaying that it's hard to determine which one. That would be the gap group one, the students with disability and the disadvantaged. I will get you the individual benchmarks in table format and forward that through Ms. Blackburn's office. Okay, and you will recall that last year, the N-count changed from 50 to 30, and many Montgomery County schools have been impacted by this decrease. However, only the division reports on all subgroups. And again, as I just stated, no school in Montgomery County has 30 students in all subgroups. This means that every student counts and we must serve every student every day in the best fashion possible. So, how can a subgroup meet the federal AMO, annual measurable objective? First, they can meet it by meeting the benchmark itself in a single-year scores of testing. They can meet it also by using a three-year rolling average. And if you'll remember that we've already said that we are, most of our schools do not have that three-year rolling average to rely on because of the increased rigor. And we're now in our third and fourth years with that increased rigor. Or, they can meet the benchmark by making safe harbor, which means reducing the failure rate by at least 10%. And many of you will remember that last year, we had the backsliding rule. And three of our elementary schools and the primary school were negatively impacted by the backsliding rule. Last year, had the backsliding rule not been in place, all of our elementary schools would have met federal accountability. And 13 schools, division-wide, would have met federal accountability instead of nine. This year, this, when the state put through their flexibility waiver, they asked the federal USED if they could change that from a punitive to a positive. So, they're, and the state, the feds approved that, so now, it's only used as a positive.
So, can you explain the black, backsliding?
The backsliding rule? Yes, if you have a school who has 85% in either, for a subgroup, in either reading or math, they've met the benchmark, but if they go back more than five percentage points, so, if they had 85% in school year 11, 12, but in school year 2013, or 2012, 2013, they went back to 79%, they would have gone back more than those five percentage points. So, last year, they would not have met federal accountability. And we did have the three elementary, Auburn Elementary, Christiansburg Elementary and Prices Fork Elementary, and then Christiansburg Primary, who had that issue. This year, that's gone, so they're only using that, that if a school does not fall back, they have met federal accountability and met higher standards, higher expectations. Okay? So, when you look at Montgomery County schools, nine elementary schools met federal accountability and two elementary schools did not meet federal accountability. And you can see there that Easter Montgomery Elementary is challenged in English and math, in both reading and math, and Prices Fork Elementary was challenged in math. And when we look at our secondary schools, we have two secondary schools that met federal accountability. And it's worth noting here that even though Christiansburg High School did not meet state accreditation, they did meet federal accountability. And then, we have six secondary schools that did not meet federal accountability. The subgroup areas where we were most challenged, and this is kind of almost across the board in where we had issues, were students with a disability and economically disadvantaged students. And economically disadvantaged students are students who receive free and reduced lunch. And that's how, that's, that's the makeup of that subgroup. And because gap group one, that's kind of a supergroup that is comprised of students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students and limited English proficiency students. So, if you have a subgroup that did not make it at the economically disadvantaged or students with disability, there's a likelihood that they will also not make it for gap group one. Two of our schools were challenged with white students. And we only have one school that was challenged with gap group two, which is African-American students, and that's Christiansburg Middle School. students, and that's Christiansburg Middle School. As a, as a division with federal accountability, we are doing a little better than the state as a whole. Montgomery County had eleven schools out of nineteen, or fifty-seven point eight-nine percent, that met federal accountability, whereas only forty-eight point two-eight percent of the schools statewide met federal accountability. At the division level, we did not meet federal accountability benchmarks in math for gap group two, African-American students, and students with a disability. And this is where it is so important for schools, who even though they may not have a subgroup of thirty, to know that their numbers roll up to the division level. And again, every student counts. And so, that's kind of where we are with that. So, what are our challenges that we have as we lie, as we go forward? As I've already mentioned, almost all schools in the division do not have the three-year rolling average to go forward with, so we have to rely on current year pass rates to meet the, both accreditation and the federal accountability benchmark. And administrators in schools must continue the work from last year to ensure instruction in the classroom continues, to engage and challenge every student at or above the level of rigor on the SOL assessments. And we now have data on individual students that is readily available in Trackbook, which you all may know that is Interactive Achievement and Power School. And we need to be sure that teachers have access to the necessary tools and are using this data at the classroom level to impact their instruction on a daily basis. Numbers in subgroups can go up. And where schools never had a subgroup before, they may suddenly have one. This means administrators and staff need to know individual students in their school. It's about relationships, and every student counts.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
Because that just sounds quite frankly ridiculous.
Okay.
That no school had a subgroup before. We had children in subgroups, the number just changed.
Correct.
And the way it's accounted for the district and not necessarily affecting your school. So, it's kind of like, okay, now, we really have to pay attention to those students, whereas before, we may not have been paying as much attention because it didn't count as much?
No. We were paying attention to the students. And that's not what I meant to say. We always need to pay attention, and I believe we have been paying attention to each and every student. We have schools that have subgroups of four.
Always have.
And always have. And those students have always rolled into the division level, where that subgroup may not count at that school level. It does count at the division level. And so, students have always counted, and they still count. I just, they, we have not.
Well, the whole purpose in changing the subgroup size was to ratchet up the attention that subgroups receive at every school. And so, that's the focus. And it was a way that the federal accountability plan had of putting a measurable, quantifiable system in place for more schools. And in Virginia, I've forgotten the number now, but there was a huge increase in the number of schools that actually are reported for subgroups than in the past. So, I think it's a good thing.
Oh, um.
You know, I wish.
It is.
Four can be a subgroup.
Four, four is a subgroup.
Four is a subgroup.
But not for reporting purposes at a school.
Right, right.
But it is.
So, let's be realistic. In Montgomery County, never, I can probably say that with all assurance, that never has there been a subgroup of thirty children in one school, ever.
Um, yes, we do.
Okay. Let's, let's go to the African-American and Hispanic children. When we get into the disadvantaged and those areas, yeah, because that covers everybody. But when we're talking about the subgroups where there are African-American children and other minority children, again, have we ever had thirty children in one school?
Yes. Christiansburg Middle has a subgroup of thirty African-American students, depending on the school year, many times Blacksburg Middle, the high schools, Blacksburg High School, maybe in mathematics, because they have algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. But, so, they have highs, they may have subgroups for African-American at Blacksburg High School, Christiansburg High School. We have an elementary school that has an Asian subgroup. So, the numbers change. And then, we do have schools that have the economically disadvantaged. The Hispanic, I'm trying to thi, we may not have a Hispanic subgroup at any of the schools. I would have to look at that and get back with you as to exactly which schools would have a Hispanic subgroup, if any.
And that's only because it dropped to thirty?
We had some high schools that had a group of fifty. Some of our larger schools would potential, potentially have a group of fifty. But the division always had the subgroup size, when you put all the schools together.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just very concerned about the way it's been said, that now, we have to really look at those kids, you know?
Okay. And it's, we have always looked at them. It's just that, for example, the disadvantaged subgroup, and even to look at that subgroup, which a lot of schools have students with disadvantaged, it gets closer and closer to the thirty at even some of our smaller elementary schools, that they have subgroups of thirty for the disadvantaged subgroup. Kips always used to have a subgroup. This past year, they did not. I can't remember if they have a subgroup of thirty for disadvantaged this year, but if they didn't, they are very close. So, the numbers change and are fluid. And we always try to look at each and every student, because each and every student counts. That was the premise of No Child Left Behind, is that no child would be left behind.
I think starting.
And we know that's a joke.
Well, starting in school year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we began doing the one-to-one conferences with every parent and child of a student who did not make satisfactory progress, as measured by SOL in reading. And we did that for every student. And one of the reasons that we did it was because it was a way to increase the focus on every student at every school. You know, we still have work to do, you know, we have work to do for every subgroup. And that's what we've been talking about tonight, is the fact that we do still have work to do. But I do think that our schools pay attention to the subgroups, all of them.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, you all know, this is the touchy part of the year for me, the worst, because.
I understand. I would share.
Because closing that gap, you know, has been there forever. And I don't have any numbers in front of me that actually show me where those gaps are. I don't see anything that compares the groups of children. And that's a concern for me right now.
Now, I was going to ask, is it possible for us to get the actual data on this?
You haven't. It was in here, July thirty-first, board update, and every single score for every single school and for the division was included for your information at that point.
Okay. So, why would not, why would we not have that here when we're having this presentation?
You do have it, if you'd like to go back in your board update and get it, Ms. Franklin. We tried to make the, the presentation for you this evening to be the major points of focus. And if we go to every single subgroup and every single data point in federal accountability and state accountability, I suspect that it would be more confusing than trying to look at the big picture. So, we're happy to come back and spend extensive time on any group that you would like for us to.
And, you know, spending time is exactly what we're supposed to be doing, spending time. So, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm happy to do that.
Because in years past, we have had that information here for the board to discuss, not in a board update where, okay, I see it. It needs to be here for the public to also see those numbers and be able to actually see what's happening.
There's some of the numbers, Ms. Franklin, that we cannot put in a public discussion.
And I absolutely know that.
Because of the fact that they're individually identifiable. So, we've never shown every single school, every single score, but we can certainly go back and do what you're asking.
We have shown, we have shown that, and it has been in our presentation, that we're, just like we're seeing here, it has been broken down so that we can see what each one of the groups are in a public forum.
Carol, would you please just restate what the groups were, that the division did not make federal accountability?
That the division did not make federal accountability?
Yes.
Yes. It was gap group two with.
Which is?
African-American students.
In mathematics.
And it was also, and yes, the division did not meet federal accountability in mathematics. And the division did not meet specifically in mathematics for African-American students and students with a disability. That's where we were sure at the division level.
Were there any other subgroups that we did not meet at the division level?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Two disabilities, can I see that?
I believe that's correct. That's correct.
But after you look at the data, if you'd tell us what you'd like for us to spend some more time on, we'd be happy to do that, Ms. Franklin.
I just want the presentations that we get to reflect exactly what's going on, and not have stuff stuck back in board updates or months before, and then you give a formal presentation, and that information's not here. You know, I want that to be here to be discussed as a board.
I don't know how to say it any plainer than we just said it. The district failed to meet federal accountability in mathematics for students with disabilities and black students. I can put that on a chart if you would like and show the specific scores.
That's what I would like.
We'll bring that to you, Ms. Franklin.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And I'll go back. Okay.
Thank you, Carol. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks. And to move on, we continue to have more rigorous standards, and at the same time, more rigorous assessments in mathematics, reading, writing, and science. And we are challenged with intentionally remediating every student who fails an SOL. We have the tools to remediate our students, and it sets the stage for their success in subsequent years, so they are ready to go into the next grade level and into the next class and be successful with the content. Another challenge at the secondary level is keeping a watchful eye on graduation rates. Students who get behind are less likely to graduate. And this year's sophomore class and the years following them have a new graduation requirement. Students earning a standard diploma will have to earn a CTE, a Career and Technical Education credent, credential. And when we look at our successes, we have to start, as Jennifer said, with the instructional model. It's at the center of everything we do when we're working with schools and staff. And we are using the instructional model to provide a concentrated focus on what instruction should look like. Last year, as stated earlier, the division had engagement as a focus, engagement at all levels. This endeavor took a lot of time and planning, in meetings, activities, delivering professional development, data sweeps, and classroom observations with feedback throughout the year. However, we reaped the benefits in student learning and increased pass rates. Additionally, as the division increased our math resources and implemented engagement strategies, we use data to guide curriculum, pacing, daily instruction, and assessment. Also, we use data to show increased student engagement in the classrooms. Last year, the division put interventions in place that in some cases, we already see the benefits. However, we believe that we will reap even more benefits this year and in years to come as our students go into their classes with reading and math foundational skills, ready to move on to the next level. The division also uses instructional coaches. The coaches work with teachers to help them enhance their instruction rather than focusing on individual students. As we've said before, we have three high schools that are now fully accredited, and they made significant gains in math. Blacksburg High School increased their overall math scores nine percentage points. Auburn went up nineteen percentage points. And Eastern Montgomery High School increased by nine, I'm sorry, by twenty-five percentage points. And the fourth high school, as I stated earlier, even though they are not fully accredited, they made significant gains. They increased their math scores by fifteen percentage points, and they are three one-hundredths of a point away from being fully accredited. They're at sixty-nine point four-seven percent. So, had they gone to sixty-nine point five or sixty-nine point five-one, that would have rolled. So, and the closer it got, it just, the more heartbreaking it was. Jonathan and I spent many hours going through every student, every student, multiple times. However, in comparing Montgomery County to the state average, for all students in reading and mathematics, the division met or exceeded the state average in thirteen out of sixteen indicators. The division met or surpassed the state average at all grade levels in reading and all grade levels in mathematics, except grades four, seven, and eight. So, that means while we are meeting the state average, we still have more work to do. We're, we're not there. Overall, Montgomery County had an overall better pass rate in reading than one hundred and six divisions in the state, and an overall better pass rate in mathematics than eighty-seven school divisions in the state. So, as we move forward, what do we have to look forward to? You all probably have already heard that the General Assembly removed some SOL assessments, the grade-three science and history, grade-five writing and history at grade six and seven in Montgomery County. However, it's important to note that even though the General Assembly eliminated these SOLs, school divisions are still required to teach and put authentic alternative assessments in place of these grade levels and subject areas with no additional funding from the state. Each local school board will be required to certify annually that the school division has provided instruction and has administered an alternative assessment that's consistent with the Virginia Board of Education guidelines to students in the grade levels and subject areas where the SOL assessment was eliminated. The Virginia Department of Education worked with the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, as well as other professional organizations or associations regarding the development and implementation of the guidelines. We are expecting the State Board of Education to pass the guidelines this Thursday. And staff in our division will be working over the next several weeks to determine what this is going to look like in Montgomery County during the twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year, this school year. So, we're building it as we fly it. And know that additional guidance, and you can interpret that, guidelines, will be more forthcoming from the state next year as to what they want that to look like in twenty-fifteen, sixteen. So, this year, they've given us a little bit of flexibility, flexibility, but next year. So this year, they've given us a little bit of flexibility, but next year, we expect to see more guidelines of exactly what the state would like those assessments to look like. And this year, the state will implement computer adaptive testing, and I'll just refer it to CAT, on the grade-six mathematics SOL assessment this school year. And with the CAT format, what that is, is once a student has responded to a question and moved forward, that student cannot go back and look at previous questions. So they're only going forward, can't go back and review. Also, the test questions could be different for each student depending on how they respond to that question. Did they get it right? Did they get it wrong? So will the question be more, will the next question be more difficult? Will it be at the same level or possibly even a little easier? So the students will be working with different questions. And as the CAT, the CAT format is phased in, teachers will need to, you know, adapt their instructional strategies and testing strategies that they use to work with the students. And given funding, the CAT format will eventually expand to math in grades three through eight and Algebra I. And also, as funding allows, it will also expand to reading, also at grades three through eight. And I believe EOC at the high school.
So, a question.
Okay.
And you're saying the test is going to be different for every child, possibly? And that if they're not able to answer a question correctly, the next question could be less difficult?
It could either be the same level of difficulty. I mean, I don't know the state's formula. So it could be different difficulty levels depending on how the student is doing with the test questions. And so, yes, it would, students who are getting the answers correct and keep progressively getting them more correct will have, could move up in difficulty level. Students who are not getting the answers correct, or maybe sporadically getting one correct, could have questions at the same level, or the difficulty level of the questions can go down. I can't talk to you statistically about how that's going to be, how that's going to happen because that's, I don't deal with that test formulation.
So what's the point?
Standard.
Yeah. There's no standard to it, so...
Well, there will be a standard. I mean, I don't know, I can't talk to the test development, but it's being done in other states and in other tests, and Virginia is implementing this. We are not a common core state, and so this is part of, of not being a common core state is that we are putting this in.
I definitely would like some more information about how that's going to work, however we need to get that.
Okay.
Because that's, that sounds absolutely ridiculous to me.
Okay. We want more information to...
We will hear as we get information because it is definitely a project under construction.
And Jonathan will be working with his teachers as it comes in too, to help them with the instructional strategies and the testing strategies as they move forward.
The tests don't stay the same, the targets don't stay the same. The only thing that stays the same is that you get measured. And, you know, that's the only thing that I can really tell you is the consistency. And, you know, I would like to thank Carol for the work that she does with each individual school. And she literally did go through every student at Bellevue and every student at CHS. They were one student away from meeting the standard. And she looked and relooked. And, you know, despite the fact that not every student met the standard, which is the goal, every student to meet the standard every year, we did move in the right direction. And I think a lot of people worked very hard to have that happen, including the great work in mathematics, including the great work with the subgroups that didn't meet it. Our black students improved ten point ninety-two percent in math this year, even though they did not meet the standard and were one of the reasons that we did not meet federal accountability. And the students with disabilities improved by three point fifty-nine percent, even though they did not meet the standard. So they're going up, but the trajectory, we've got to kick it up a little bit more. And that's what we're doing with the engagement strategies and with the focus on an instructional model and working with teachers through the coaching model because it is the teacher who makes the difference. It's what happens between teachers and students in the classrooms in Montgomery County. So I'm very proud of the fact that we're moving in the right direction and proud of the good work that was done to make that happen. So thank you, Carol.
Okay. And I'd like to end with a couple things. Part of what we are committed to in Montgomery County is maintaining a cross-section of opportunities for all of our students. And some of the opportunities that we have already implemented, just to name a few, are schedule changes and intervention programs such as iStation, Read 180, Math 180, System 44, Wilson, Project DAME, and summer school. And I'd like to end with a couple quotes, and I'll just kind of summarize those, that the SOLs have shifted from minimum competency standards to college and career-ready standards. And we are challenged in the state to work with the Virginia Department of Education and other school divisions to share best practices and instructional strategies that move our students in that direction.
Any other questions, board?
I was in the audience last Thursday when we, Virginia School Board Association, had the conference on advocacy legislated. And actually, President Bronlick was in the audience in the panel. And one of the topics was the alternative assessments and what they are kind of expecting the localities to come up with. And these are my notes, not his quotes per se. But what they said is for the year 2014-15, they're giving the localities to come up with alternative assessment for the board to use later. So they are concerned that this is going to be a burden on the localities financially, but they want to know what are the resources we use, what you need from them, and what are the things we would like to see from them and from the General Assembly. So they really like to see how we capture learning, how to communicate with others, and how to give confidence in children. And they are really looking forward to hear from the localities. So they will formulate whatever the next step is for the next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Any other comments? Thank you, Carol.
Our next item is school start times. And the evaluation of Montgomery County Public Schools' school start times in relationship to the needs of our students has been on my radar for some time. In fact, dating back to the decisions that were made about the constructions of two new high schools. I remember very clearly when the board voted that evening to move forward from our perspective with the new schools, Dr. Hopkins said, "Well, Ms. Blackburn, why don't you do the school start time study while you're getting the two schools ready to open?" Well, it turned out to be just a little bit more than I could handle at one time. So it's back on the radar this year. And tonight, I've asked Jennifer Weaver to provide you with some background information, some research citations, a work plan to guide this review, and some next steps in the process. This is actually the first presentation that has been made to the board during my tenure around this topic. Following this evening's presentation, it is my plan to bring back a resolution to the board requesting that you support through the resolution the work that will be done to accomplish this. So let's hear from Jennifer and then have some discussion from the board about your commitment to changing school start times.
Good evening again. So at the request of the board, the staff has been examining a cursory view of start and dismissal times. I think that the major change that really is driving our decision-making at this point is the increasing amount of research about the adolescent brain and how it responds at different times of the day. And this summer, as you all know, the American Academy of Pediatrics not only released a study, but went so far as to make a recommendation that middle and high schools not start before 8:30. So certainly, the linchpin in trying to make that happen in reality is how it impacts our transportation system. So I just wanted to remind you that MCPS operates a two-tiered system. Currently, the elementary school arrive and dismiss at one time, and middle and high school. So if we are maintaining our budget at its current level, if we adjust one, obviously, we'd have to adjust the other. So I gave you one possible solution that our Transportation Department has given us as an option, which would have elementary schools starting at 7:40, middle schools starting at 8:40, and high schools starting at 8:50. And I thought you might be interested in what other school divisions in our region currently operate. And as you can see, there are very few schools, basically us in Salem, who are starting much before 8:15. Most of them are nearing to 8:30. And most of the elementary schools, it's not unusual, as you can see, for them to start pretty close to what we recommended around the 7:45 mark. And this is Region 6, but there is a diverse group of school divisions across the state that either have changed their start times this year to later start times for high school or are planning to do it for next year. Most of the major school divisions, Loudoun, Fairfax, Charlottesville, Alamo Marl, York, are all either in the process of changing or considering changing. So this is a very hot topic across the state. Obviously, there are some things that we would need to consider and think through in this process. Some of the big ones that all the divisions I mentioned seem to have in common are the impact that it might have on things that happen after school, things like sports, clubs, after-school employment, impact on other students. Obviously, we're very concerned about the impact that it would have on elementary students. An impact on family, how it might change their childcare routines or their work schedules. So these are all things that we would have to consider very seriously going forward. And so I laid out for you just a brief timeline of what it might look like if we chose to pursue this further, if the board was interested in looking at a resolution encouraging us to develop a plan and a recommendation that would have high schools and middle schools starting after 8:30. We'd develop a committee representing all our stakeholder groups. Like I said, obviously, all those considerations that we mentioned before, we would want to have people who bring a diverse set of opinions about those things so that we can make sure that the solution that we propose meets the needs of all those groups. There's lots of research, piles and piles of research for the impact on high school and middle school students, but also on the impact on elementary students, which seems to be more neutral. It's very specific that high school and middle school students' brains appear to be wired to operate later in the day more successfully. With elementary, the research centers, excuse me, the research center is more on it being neutral. They found not a change. It didn't necessarily improve achievement, but it didn't decrease it either. It stayed pretty similar. And then we move into soliciting stakeholder feedback from a large group, things like surveys. And then we would hope by January, we'd have a chance to look at all that feedback, to have looked at the research, and prepare a recommendation for your consideration for next school year. So it's a brief outline of how we might go about addressing the idea of starting our high schools and middle schools at a later time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So is the idea with the resolution, a resolution just gives direction as to where to go forward, but then a final vote, voting on the details of how, is that correct?
Yes, the final vote would take place with the board, and it would be the plan that comes forward from all the work that had been done with the committee. But to go into this level of engagement and research around a topic, we need some commitment from the board that you are truly interested in pursuing this. And other school districts have generally done it by asking their board to do a resolution. For example, Fairfax has one that says, "We would like high schools not to start before 8:30, high schools and middle schools." You might choose to say eight o'clock. I think the one in Fairfax says eight o'clock, in fact. But the research says the closer you get to 8:30 or later, the better off you are. And it is another strategy that may really have an impact on student achievement at the middle and high school, while the research, by the same token, says that the younger children are up and raring to go first thing in the morning. And so it could have positive impact on student achievement across all grade levels. But to invest in it, in the staff time and in the community engagement, it really needs to be something that the board feels that you could support if we come up with a right solution.
Any other comments?
When I was in Christiansburg High School, we started at 8:25 when I went to school. It was 8:25, and we got out at 3:15.
Did you have dual bus routes then, or were they putting everybody on the same bus?
And that's my concern. You know, when I'm putting Abby on the bus at seven o'clock at the end of my driveway and with this no one that's coming up, I can't imagine putting my grandchild on the bus at seven o'clock in the morning. That's where my problem lies. I can't imagine that. It's dark, it's cold, it's wet, it's foggy, and I have a problem with that. You know, some, I took my child to the end of the driveway. But there's a whole lot of parents that do not. And I see kids standing out, and, you know, that's where my problem lies. Now, yeah, I think it's great to have high school and middle schoolers go later. I think it's a great way if we can work it all out. But I do have a problem putting a baby on the bus at seven o'clock in the morning.
I'll echo that from what Ms. Bond said. At some point, we have to start teaching high schoolers some kind of personal responsibility. When they get into the real world, they are going to have to wake up before eight o'clock to get somewhere to work or to college. To me, I have a real problem with making a change with it. And, you know, there comes a certain point where we have to be disciplined. If we're not going to sleep before one o'clock in the morning, that's a student and a parent problem. And I think that there needs to be a little bit more responsibility taken in those lines. I personally, unless there is some major thing that changes my mind completely, intend to vote no in moving forward with this.
Go ahead. I was just going to mention that I read extensive, the research that came out on August 25th. And it, the research goes back to looking at the secondary school students and their bodies and what goes on with them and what makes them not be able to fall asleep at an earlier time. And I'm not talking about before 1:00 a.m., but, and how they're, and the research is so out there telling you that they perform better in school when they're not getting in there at 7:00 a.m. And they're showing up at school, the absentee rates, there's data out there that shows that it dramatically increases. So I will support the staff going further on this project.
But I have to comment on that, you know, and that is true. But then again, you know, we are shown that statistically, all our lunches are better, but back when, the lunches weren't all the nutritionally programmed-based. Kids were slimmer than they are now. So go figure. To me, there's lots of other issues that are requiring. And my husband has sleep apnea, so there's not a whole lot about sleep that I don't know. I've listened, and he is a huge advocate on teenagers getting their sleep. So I am truly an advocate on that. I got, had two come through and got one now. But I do agree with Joey. I think there's other issues that sometimes we're becoming, we're becoming a nation that coddles our young adults and allows them to work with what their needs are opposed to what should be. And I think we have to keep that in mind as we're doing this.
Well, when you're talking responsibility, this, the studies show that responsibility has absolutely nothing to do with this. The studies show that youngsters in their teens need more sleep.
So go to bed earlier.
Excuse me. The youngsters that we're dealing with, I can take my grandchildren, for example. They come home from school, they do their homework, part of it. They go to practice whatever sport they're into. They come back after that, and they do dinner, and then they do more homework. And they get to bed between 10 and 11 because they need to do the work that's put before them each day. And in the morning, it's tough. It's very difficult for them. They're not even part of the study, and I've just observed this. They're not even part of the study, and I've just observed this. All studies, all studies have indicated that, that these children need more sleep. The other, the other informal study, which I thought was really revealing, was when the roof collapsed and we double shifted over at the middle school. The high schoolers went to school in the afternoon and had a, had, we had great, informally now, from what I've understood, teachers indicated that the response was great. So I would go with what the studies say, and I think this is a really big issue. And the one pullback is putting those youngsters, the little youngsters, out in the morning to catch those buses. And I know that there's going to be a lot of parents out there who are going to disagree with everything the studies say, because they don't want their children out there in the middle of the night, excuse me, in the middle of the morning, when it's still dark. But again, we've got to weigh the advantages and the disadvantages, and giving these youngsters in the high school the time that they need so that they can respond when they get to school, I think that aces over everything.
And I think we have plenty of other counties around us to talk to about how they have handled this early morning start.
It's not the issue to go back, go to bed early. You know, you'll have a high schooler soon, and you'll find out, there is not physically possible for them to go to bed early before 11 o'clock. I've been there, especially if they're active after school, doing the homework they need to do, and eat and socialize with the family. I'm not saying they're partying, they're with their friends, or they are by the computer or tweeting, you know. I'm not saying that just a regular student coming from school, doing work, or going to athletic events, or band practice, coming, doing work, eating, saying hi to the family, and going to bed. 11 o'clock, I can see, is minimum. And if you add to that eight-hour minimum sleep that is needed, it could be even nine, but let's go with the eight, that's 7 a.m. in the morning, and you already missed the school time for a high schooler. And they are coming to school, so it's not a discipline issue, but they are not probably first period of every day. What they retain will be questionable. I think that, you know, starting late, you'll gain that first period retaining whatever class you are in. If it is math, it is not really good. If it is something a little easier subject, maybe you're doing okay. But I definitely agree for the flip side, even though I know young kids, 4 a.m., 5 a.m., up and about and ready to jump, but putting them out dark to the bus, that's also, you know, concern, could be every, every parent's concern. But again, like Mr. Ivors said, we have to weigh advantages and disadvantages, and I kind of go with the research too. So I will support the.
I think we need to hear from, from the public on this, and the way to do that, I think, would be to have a resolution, and that way, we can reach out with a steering committee, and, and, and it indicates here that we would solicit stakeholder feedback, and I think that would be very appropriate.
Yeah, I have two children, and they were on both sides of the spectrum. One's up the crack of dawn with me, and the other, we were trying to drag her out of the bed to get in the car, to get to school on time every morning. And I don't know that every child's gonna, you know, react to this the same way. I see the study and all the data and everything that's out there, and I can agree with that, you know. But I also have the concern about having small children out there in the dark. But we also hear from parents who say, "I don't want my child," you know, "the high school kids get out early, the, now, the younger kids get out later. I have someone there, but in the morning, there's no one there with them because of the," so, you know, it goes both ways. It always has. But I would support looking at what's going on, hearing from the public, what they feel about, you know, what we want to do with their children, okay? But like I said, I had one of each, and it was interesting mornings, that's all I can say.
Any other comments? So I think your direction, by the sound of the majority of the board, is to proceed.
That is what I see. So we'll bring you a resolution. In all likelihood, the resolution will say 8:30, because that is what the American Pediatrics Association recommends, and that's what most of the studies do. So our goal in doing it would be that we would come up with options that would not start the high school or middle school before 8:30, and that's what we'll put in the resolution.
With that resolution option, though, will it also say what intentions the bus routes will be, as far as, like?
Not yet.
Well, but I mean, how do you, I don't know that I would even accept a resolution if I didn't know, and I'm not talking about bus route, I'm talking, okay, they're going to ride together, they're going to be separate, they're gonna, that kind of thing.
We have to run a dual run. We have to run a dual run. We have to run the middle and high school together and elementary.
Yeah, I would want to know that. That's what I would want to know.
We'll be able to give you some very broad parameters, but not, not, the earliest that any child would be picked up would be, you know, we might could say what that practice is now.
Right.
What is the earliest that a student is currently picked up. Okay. All right, so we'll move forward with that one.
Could the resolution not, or say, you know, no, no later than, is that what you're saying? It's going to say no later than 8:30?
No, early.
No earlier than 8:30.
Could it not say no later than 8:30? And that gives us room to say 8:15 or 8 o'clock, depending on how things play out.
Really, the 8:30 would give you more flexibility on the end of the early pickup of the younger students, because the later you start the high school, the later you pick up the little ones. So that's why I'm kind of pushing 8:30, because of trying to go as late as I could to pick up the first young children.
It looks like only Roanoke County is 8:45, and the Biotat is 9 o'clock, but the rest is pretty much 8:25, most of them, with a few exceptions.
That makes it sound more appealing, as far as that kind of thing, to make the.
Is the general feeling that if 8:30 were the time for high schoolers, the absolute earliest we could do, or the absolute latest that we could do, elementary would be 7:40?
That's going to be part of the work that the committee is going to do, but that's, that is one scenario. There were others that were put together to look at, just hypotheticals. Okay. Okay, the next one is the VSBA Professional Development Proposal. A board member requested identification of the budgeting source for the proposed VSBA Professional Development for the board. The funds will come from Purchased Services, which is line 21, as shown on the attached expenditure summary by major category. And I'm seeking this evening your approval of this plan, with the dates to be determined.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, just scheduling on that. Where, have we gotten most boards' responses at this point?
It's actually under your, oh, business.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Motion passed.
Next item is Information Policy 1-2.5. It's a first reading. The board directed the superintendent to bring back an appropriate policy revision, which would allow school board members to participate in the division's health insurance plan. The necessary policy revision is attached. It's presented this evening for your information.
Well, I won't go through the spill for the third time, but my, my whole, you know, in, in bringing this up, I kind of want to state, I have insurance. So it's not about me not having insurance. It's about feeling like, and, and I listened to all the comments that we had the last meeting that this was brought up, and, you know, I don't look at this as a, as a volunteer thing. I look at this as a job. You know, I worked concessions for five years, two and three nights a week. That's volunteer. Civic organizations are volunteer. This is a job. And, you know, I did a lot of talking, and I look back at the years of the people that ran for office, and I didn't see a large amount running for the Board of Supervisors just because they offer benefits, just because they pay more. My feeling on this is, I don't feel like that many people really realize what pay is or offerings on boards. If they want to be involved, they run for the office and they do it. I feel like we work hard. Like I said, I look at this as a job. And what I'm looking for is that if the board were to approve it, then maybe we could send it to the Board of Supervisors and see if they would fund it. But we can't find out if this board doesn't approve it. And, you know, that's, that's my goal, with that being said.
Any other comments?
Well, the supervisors fund everything.
Right.
Or should I say, the taxpayers fund everything.
And it's sad to say that so, but, no.
Any other comments?
Just, I don't have a problem with it being an option, because I don't know that everyone is going to participate in it.
And if I could, that was one of the things I actually forgot, you know, and I checked with that too, and it is an option. It's not a compensated if you don't. It's the kind of thing that if you get, if you want to, you know, participate, it's there, single subscribers covered. If you don't opt into it, then you don't get it. And that's the way the Board of Supervisors works. I even checked with what our town council does. It's hard to find information, just, you know, to pull up on the web about pay scales for boards. It goes from zero to 20,000. And a lot of districts provide insurance, a lot of them don't. Town councils, you know, our town council probably makes 1,200, 1,400 more a year than we do, and they don't offer benefits. So each board does different things, but, like I said, I found many, many, many different varieties, but it's not a compensated thing if you don't, it's just if you do. Same thing with cell phones. From what I understand, if you want a cellphone, you can have one, but if you don't want one, you're not paid what that other cellphone costs.
Just to finish my thought, my only, my only concern, obviously, is where we're going to pay for this, where it's going to come from, from the budget, and if it's actually there. Should all seven of us participate in, in any given year, or whatever? So, you know, I'm willing to, to at least explore it. Let's see where, if it, if it can be a help, if it can be something that we can find in the budget, then I'm okay with looking at it at least.
Anyone else?
You know, my, tend to go with my gut feelings, and I'm just not comfortable with this. I'm just not. So I couldn't vote in favor of it. I've tried to look at it from all kinds of ways, and hearing what you're saying, Jamie, and I'm just not comfortable with this.
That's okay.
Just not.
Well, Jamie, I wish you'd have never brought it up, because I looked at this, and this package would benefit me greatly. I mean, if I voted for the change in this policy, I mean, I'm talking thousands of dollars. It would benefit me thousands of dollars. But having said that, I'm, none of us are here to benefit ourselves. We're just not here to do that. And the state has come out and said that there's a $2.4 billion shortfall, and then they said, "Ah, but we won't touch K through 12." But they also said that they're going to nail the county, and the county's going to have to put up something. And if they put up something, we're not going to get something. So right away, I can tell you that we're in a hole before we even start this coming year. Seven to $9,000 would cost the county to insure me, and, and that's taking money away from either kids, and if three of us decide to do this, then we got to get rid of a custodian. If five or six of us decide to do this, we got to get rid of a teacher. And I, I just, I just, I can't see it. I really can't see it. It's, I, I don't even want to go the next step with this. I don't want to be part of a board that takes away from students to benefit, benefit themselves. I just don't want to be part of that. And, and to be very honest with you, I would, I'd like to withdraw this whole thing, if there's any way we could do it. That's my feeling on it.
I agree with Mr. Ivors. I don't think we need to spend any more time on this than another board meeting.
I mean, whether it will go forward, and then we have to vote to the policy, or we stop, I don't know how we can pull it back or, at this time or not, but, yeah, I don't feel comfortable asking additional benefits, so.
You would essentially make a, make a motion to not move the policy forward to second reading and/or to reject the proposed changes to the policy. Either motion would, would serve the purpose.
So I move to not move this Policy 1-2.5 to second reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify.
Don't you think we should probably do something on a roll call, since it does involve?
We can do that.
I think it makes the most sense.
Let's have a roll call vote then.
Sure. I need just a moment to update the item. I don't think you're looking. That's in case nobody got to pay for anything. Ms. Woolsey, I have the motion as to maintain Policy 1-2.5 as currently written, to not move the proposed revisions to a second reading. Does that sound correct? Ms. Coran, does that sound correct for your second? Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
A yes vote does what? I'm sorry.
You will not see this again.
I was, I, I'm still thinking about this whole thing.
You would not see it at the next meeting.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
So the policy will not come forward again.
Right, thank you. And I think that finishes your.
It finishes me up. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. My computer won't.
Would you like for me to help?
Is there any unfinished business?
On your agenda, you have the professional development dates with the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do. There it is. The VSBA offered several dates, as you can see on your computer. And based on the survey, the board's five of, five of seven board members can attend sessions on January 13. the boards, five of, five of seven board members can attend sessions on January 13th, March 10th, April 14th, and June 9th.
I say.
Do we want to continue with this process with five board members? Would be my first question.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Because we can't keep postponing, and it seems like it's going to be hard to get all of us in one place, so.
Okay.
Is it possible, since these dates are so far out in the year? Because some of us cannot plan our lives six months out, okay? Can't do it, you know? My job and other commitments don't allow that. So is it possible that we can schedule a couple of them? Or is it even possible that we can do six hours instead of three-hour sessions and double this up?
Ms. Franklin? It, something's, it must be the water, because I agree with you.
Two weeks in a row.
Two weeks in a row. Unheard of, absolutely unheard of.
Spooked.
I went out to April and June not knowing, having any idea what's happening in April and June. And I can only hope and pray that those dates will be open. But I can't guarantee it. I'm in the same boat.
I mean, theoretically, none of us can guarantee. I mean, we can be dead by that time, too.
Exactly. Well, don't mention it. I'm too old for that.
We have to set aside.
And I would think we could reschedule if it hap, if it happens that more, less than five, I would think we could work it out, right?
But let me ask, let me ask this question. Are there dates connoted here where you can make it, but you can't make all four? Is that what you're saying?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, well, anybody, but yeah.
I don't know that I can make any of these dates right now.
Oh, okay.
I don't. You know, this is October, and there are commitments that are out there that dates haven't been set, that are related to my job, and I can't do that at this point.
I understand.
Well, and that's my problem with doing the six-hour thing. I can't lose work. So it's, it's either going to have to be a nighttime thing, or I can't be there.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's leave it as it is. And as we get closer to the time, we'll just hope for the best and see if all of us, and even those who haven't indicated they could, maybe they can. I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah. I mean, I think we do have to give our trainers some indication as well. I mean, they're not going to be able to just change dates on a whim either, so.
Well, we're not changing the dates. We're just saying that at least five people will show up.
Yeah.
And maybe six, maybe seven.
Right.
So is there a flexibility on that? Like, we commit five now, and then six, ten, seven will show up if we are all seven of us there on those days? It's okay, all right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Then do I hear, Mr. Ivors, that I should have VSBA book these dates for our board?
Yes.
That's what I will do.
Any other unfinished business? I have one bit of unfinished business. We have something hanging over our head. It's called an evaluation. And it involves a superintendent. And I'm not sure what Mr. Jones's schedule will be over the next month. But I will contact him and let him know that we need to move forward with that rapidly. Is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll do that as soon as the sun comes up tomorrow morning. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? New business?
I do think we needed to discuss the, what was presented during public address about this bus pickup issue. I know, Ms. Blackburn, you met with the couple earlier today, or you did not?
No, I went to the bus, I went to the campus.
Okay.
The bus stop.
So could, could we get a little bit more information about where we stand with all of that, what we've proposed, where we think we are with that?
I'd be happy to tell you what I know, the.
Let me, let me just, like, that's, yes, thank you. There's been conversations. Have there been emails and phone calls? Do you have all that with you now, or do you, you can present it?
I have enough to be able to present you the big picture.
Okay.
The Kaufmans have been working with the school, and with Transportation, and with Mr. Dr. Stateon since school started regarding their bus stop. And in the meantime, they have arranged alternate coverage to get their children to the bus stop. The Virginia Tech campus is not on the, we have a system, let me find it here. We have a system that we go into a map, and it tells you how far it is from the house to the spot. And the Virginia Tech campuses are not, the roads in the campus are not included in our system. So the bus stop that was negotiated with the Kaufmans is just about .4 from their house. And our standard is .3. So we went to the community today. We drove all through the streets there. Dr. Stateon, myself, and Rebecca from Transportation. I identified a stop which is at the corner of, John, correct me if I'm wrong, it's at the corner of Washington and Clay?
And Kent.
Kent, Washington and Kent. It is a .3 distance from the sign that says 700 Washington Street. It is a broad pedestrian sidewalk. It's a straight path, concrete sidewalk all the way, and it is .3 tenths of a mile to that corner stop. So after I had identified the stop, I asked Rebecca to go back to the transportation compound, get a bus, and come drive that route to see if it was safely passable for the bus. So she got the driver of the actual bus that does the Kaufman's run, and went to that stop today and checked to make sure that it would be safe, the students would, it's a four-way stop, the bus would come to the stop, coming from, going into the campus. They would stop at Washington and they, and Kent. And the students would cross on a marked pedestrian path to the bus from a corner, from one corner to the other, and get on the bus. And then the bus would turn left down Kent and go off of the Virginia Tech campus. It is problematic to go onto the campus. We don't currently have any stops on the campus. And it is problematic because of the multiple marked crosswalks, because of the heavy pedestrian traffic that you find on the Tech campus. And yes, they have many buses that traverse their thoroughfares inside the campus. But they are not school buses. And they do not have a cargo of 60 under 18 years of age passengers. They also do not have flashing lights and a stop sign that goes out and stops everybody from going anywhere while they pass. And so it is my considered opinion that the .3 mile stop that was identified today, which is at the corner of Washington and Kent, is a safe and appropriate stop to serve this family or any other family that happened to reside in that dormitory facility.
Have you been able to share that information with the Kaufmans before tonight?
Dr. Stateon shared that information. I don't know whether he spoke with the Kaufmans or whether it was an email conversation. John, did you speak with the Kaufmans, or was it email? He'd come to the podium.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The last, any information that was communicated to Mr. Dr. Kaufman was a direct conversation with him this afternoon. That was after we, we did the additional look at the stops, and then we followed it up with the email communications.
Did it seem to be acceptable to them?
He said that that was amenable. That's a discussion that we can continue to have. He said it was likely if that had been presented to him earlier, he, we may not be disappointed that we are right now.
For me, I mean, if they're okay with it, I'm okay with it. I just want us, I want us to be just, communicate this. And if you would, after talking with the Kaufmans some more, just communicate with us again where that stands, and see if there's any, if there's any other solutions that are better, that are presented, or whatever. Because we definitely want to try to serve, obviously, the kids as best we can, and this family. Yes, sir.
Any other comments on that? Any other new business?
I wanted to ask a question about the liaison meetings that we have with the Board of Supervisors. I know our chair is traveling a lot, so that probably prevents him from going to some. But do, Mr. Ivors, do you fill in when he can't go to those? And when was the last one? And do we get feedback from those meetings at all?
Okay, now, I haven't been, I haven't been attending those, because I find out that he's not going to be here like a day or two before. So Brendan and I had a conversation today, I think it was today, maybe it was yesterday, as to what we're going to do forward.
Okay.
So that'll be taken care of. Okay?
And if you can't attend, I'd be glad to attend those, too.
And me as well. I mean, if you just need to go through all of us to see if any of us can attend, if you go through a, a list, then, you know, if we can be available, I think.
Once we know Mr. Jones is scheduled, we can, we can work from there. Okay?
He has been able to join some of them via phone conference as well. So that's been an alternative. But the last couple have been cancelled, one at the supervisor's request, and one because of schedule conflict. So we need to get them back up and running.
I don't, I don't know if this is new business. I'm going to put it on our new business. We, we've been looking for items to discuss during our retreat, and salaries, benefits, budget, code of conduct, all kinds of stuff has been brought up. And there seems to be a split, which I'm not surprised about. But I gave each of you a, a piece of paper that I'd like you to look at. It's called conclusions. And in those conclusions, if you recall, we were evaluated, it's a report of the external review for Montgomery County Public Schools. And if you turn to page 38 on that document that I gave you, the first, second, third, fourth, fifth paragraph down, it indicates there, let me read that, "Apparent during the visit was an articulated lack of training by veteran and new board members in the area of their roles and responsibilities, as well as in several other critical areas that would enhance the quality of their performance. It also noted that the board struggled with cohesiveness when addressing and having to make decisions of critical issues." That was one point that they brought up. On the next page, which is page 39, the first paragraph, let me move. I'm sorry, let me move to page 41. My mistake. Required action number two: Provide training so all board members can participate in a systematic, formal, professional development program regarding the roles and responsibilities of the governing body and its official members to include learning opportunities in the area of conflict resolution, decision-making, supervision and evaluation, and fiscal responsibility. And then on the next page, page 42, the last paragraph, it indicated that the team also yielded possibility of misunderstandings of the role and responsibility of board members, and concerns about board members becoming too involved in the day-to-day operations of the district. I won't continue to read that. But it seems to me, if we're going to have a retreat, that this document right here is what we should address. Because somebody is telling us that we have some problems. And these people who told us this were out there looking in and listening to what we had to say, and came up with these, and, and I don't know if they're disputable or not, but it seems to me they're issues that we need to work on. And that would be an impetus for a great retreat, in my opinion.
My understanding.
Training is what.
I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin.
If you look at the outline of the professional development, it outlines everything you just read.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, I think those, those things are being addressed by those four dates that we can't disagree, that we can't agree on.
Well, let me ask you this. Are the, are the four dates going to be like a retreat where we can interact with each other?
I bet it will be. I'm guessing that's the kind of thing.
Because that's what we really need to do.
Dr. Graham?
Tried that before, but.
Do they have interactive ability? It's not just stand and deliver, it's discussion and that kind of thing?
Yes. My understanding is that they will talk with board members and try to structure it as, as much as they can, the way that you want. And definitely, interaction is a large component of the retreat, or the not retreat, but the training plans.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? What about announcements and information?
I have a few that I would like to share. One, I would like to congratulate Mr. Hawkins from Blacksburg High School Science Teacher for winning the Yale Award. It was a well-deserved award. And also thank Claire Ewing Nielsen, the VHS graduate, to nominate him for this award. And also, I would like to share a few points from the Virginia School Board Association Conference I attended on Thursday last week on legislative advocacy, and on two hot topics. One, state of the broadband access in Virginia, and the future of virtual and blended learning. I have just a small summaries of it. I know it's getting late. Broadband access is still a long way away from being available to every house and every school at a desirable speed. And they say desirable speed is 100 megabytes per second per thousand students. And educating students on the need and encouraging local governments adopting telecom-friendly policies are key. That was the summary of that hot topic. And virtual blended learning is wonderful, engages students, makes the learning personalized with real-time access and immediate feedback, but very dependent on technology and broadband availability. So it kind of goes hand in hand. They touched on federal education issues, that National School Board Association campaigning. And the panel of two senators and two delegates were available to answer legislative questions, including SOL number reduction, the broadband, and how to help challenged schools. And then there were panel of three school board members from Spasvillania County, Fredericksburg City, and Virginia Beach. And they're share their successes in grassroots advocacy. And that was the part I found pretty impressive and amazing. And I think we have to look into how we can get together or improve our relationships within the board, what is our vision, and then our relationship with Board of Supervisors, and our relationship with our senators and legislators. Because they have, especially that Spasvillania County, they are getting together quarterly with all those parties and discussing what their needs are. So I think if we want our voice be heard, we have to somehow get those relationships on a, on a better status. That's my personal opinion on that, or personal take on that. It was pretty impressive what they've been doing. And it was a pretty regular basis deal that they are meeting with their counterparts. Not once a year, but definitely more than that. And then there are also panel of Board of Education members there, including the president. And they spoke on the basically guidelines that I mentioned for local alternative assessment. So, you know, basically, that summarizes. And I have a question, and it doesn't need to be answered right now, but I was wondering what is our broadband speed in our schools? And then also, we know that we're getting Lenovo computers. Will they be compatible with Pearson for SOL-taking purposes? Because that was also a big discussion. Apparently Chromebooks 8.0 is compatible for students be able to take SOLs on their iPads, I mean, electronic tablets. But iPads are not there, apparently, so. So, the state is actually working, making the iPads accessible, so, that's all.
That I meant to bring up before. What, what is the next step from the Board of Supervisors after they discussed our carryover money, um, this past Monday?
It will be on their agenda this coming Monday. And I will go back again. And Mr. Lyons joined us the other evening as well, and I appreciated his presence.
Any other announcements or information? Happy birthday, Goona.
Oh, thank you.
Few days late, but happy birthday.
But I appreciate it. I couldn't make the Board of Supervisors meeting because I was too busy celebrating.
Good decision.
Upcoming school board meetings. You can see the list there, October 7th through the, uh, November 18th. Anything we need to discuss there? Okay, you know, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Too many seconds.